All right, I'm gonna call the city council meeting for the City of Lake Elmo Wednesday, November 5th order. If you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have an agenda that we need to approve. There is an item that should be removed from the consent agenda, which is item number nine. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion with the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an amended agenda removing item number nine from tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Public comments and inquiries. So, it's time when the public has time to come and speak to the council. There's no interaction between council and speaker. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You do have six minutes. So I'll call Jim Bowler.
Good evening, Jim Bowler, 11314 12th Street North. I've been a Lake Elmo resident for 35 years. Yeah, I'm here to speak on behalf of the donated equipment for the pickleball courts in Pebble Park, because I'm the guy who made them. So if you have any questions or concerns, you can talk directly with me. And we appreciate the recommendation to accept the paddle holders and the beverage holders that I made, which is great. We appreciate that, like I said, but not quite sure why the recommendation did not include the benches and the court barriers, court dividers. The benches, they're solid, made of two-by-12 and two-by-four green-treated lumber. They're sanded smooth, rounded edges with a router, sanded again, no splinters, no sharp edges. They're solid as heck. I made them so people could have a chance to sit down between games and, you know, socialize, chit-chat, rest, whatever. And some people come just to watch, because they're injured or whatever, they can't play more than 10 minutes and they gotta go somewhere, but they wanna see their friends. So, they're very helpful, I think, and perhaps maybe one of the reasons they weren't accepted is because in the write-up Jennifer wrote, they've lasted four years. Well, they'll last way longer than four years, probably 20 years, because half of the year is they sit in my garage out of the elements, so they'll last quite a long time. The court dividers, those were built because the courts were built, you know, back-to-back, so if I'm playing here, there's somebody playing directly behind me. And of course, the balls are flying back and forth, just like a tennis court. And, you know, you'd never build a tennis court without dividers between the courts, like Oakland Junior High, for example. It don't have to be 15-foot barriers. The ones I built are just two feet high. They stop 90% of the balls, and people are worried about, you know, a ball coming at their feet when they're running and tripping on the ball and getting hurt and such. So, everyone loves them. I mean, 100%, people are saying they're great, they really help alleviate the concern that they're gonna get injured or something, and it's, you know, it's just, it kind of just makes common sense to enjoy the game better when you're not chasing the ball somewhere back there for, you know, 100 feet or whatever. But they are, they are a work in progress. I'm probably on like version 3.0, little tweaks here and there, as I see the winds blowing them over or something else is happening, I'll try to fix them and keep them maintained. And perhaps that's maybe the other reason they weren't accepted. We put them up, we take them down, the staff doesn't have to do anything, there's no maintenance by the staff, there's no work expected from the staff. If they get injured, or, I mean, if they get damaged, I would, I would be the one fixing them. Perhaps there was concern that somebody would get hurt on them. I guess that's, anything's possible, but probably no, more so than running into the pearly cemented four-foot posts that hold up all the nets, or running into a net and falling over on top of it. I mean, there's all sorts of things you could imagine, but we believe they're very safe and they actually protect the players more than their risk is. Anyway, I'm the guy. Again, I'll maintain them, there's no effort from the staff. So we'd ask that you please approve the court dividers and the benches. We just, we're just trying to be, you know, good citizens, helping out the city where we can, make the parks more enjoyable for us and everyone, and would appreciate the approval. Thank you.
All right. Don't have anybody else that wanted to talk, so we can move into the approval of the minutes from previous meeting. They were outlining our packet. I'll entertain a motion on approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from council meeting, was it in October? Yeah, the second, October 15th or 14th. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from the council meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, council meeting minutes are approved. In our consent agenda this evening, we have approve payments and disbursements, approve light-up Lake Elmo special event permit, approve massage therapy license renewal, approve Woodbury Athletic Association charitable gambling permit, approve Lyons Park playground replacement, approve 2025 Crack Seal Project pay request, accept Graff family park bench donation, accept Lake Elmo pickleball friends donation, approve Wildflower 4th Edition landscape security reduction, approve, approval of Public Works Director job description and authorized recruitment for the position, approve interim Public Works Director. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Question, I know we approved the agenda, I mean, is it possible to discuss the pickleball with the comments, just to have the discussion with it?
I'll allow it. You wanna pull the...
Just do a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, you're gonna do, yeah, mo, thank you, Jeff. Motion to reconsider agenda.
Uh, motion to reconsider the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, so just like to pull number eight.
Into the regular agenda, all right. All those accepting the motion to reconsider, approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so council member Hearn would like to pull number eight, and we would make that number three in the regular agenda. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda with item number eight, except Lake Elmo pickleball friends donation into the regular agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll take a, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda without item eight.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended twice.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is hereby approved. First item is, on the regular agenda is Washington County draft CIP comments, I believe Mr. Griffin will be, Griffith will be walking us through this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to just give you a summary of the, of the Washington County CIP. They update their CIP just like the city does once each year. We received a copy of the CIP in early October, and the county does request comments by the cities, and we have found over the years through this practice that they, they do listen, they do look at the comments, so it's important to respond, you know, either in support or, or let them know what we're thinking. So, you know, it's a very, it's like a 600-page document, so I go through the document and I just pull out what's Lake Elmo, and I don't go through the facilities, I don't go through the park and rec stuff, I'm just looking at the roads and bridges work that, that's in this document. And then I, in your packet is a letter, a draft letter for responses that we would send in a letter that Nicole would send out tomorrow. And then I did hand you a revised letter, since I did get some comments on the packet, and showed the revisions in yellow, so, and there can, so we're looking for additional revisions to that as a, as an end product that we get sent to Wash, sent to Washington County in the next couple of days. So just a quick summary of, of what they're looking to do in the next five years in Lake Elmo. It's, it's, the map is in your packet as well, but the first project is obviously, you know, many of these projects you're aware of, County Road 17 and Trunk Highway 36 intersection, and a south frontage road. So that's the first project. We identified as a very critical project for the city, and talk about being supportive for that. You'll have the county here at the workshop next week to provide you an update on the schedule and where that project is at, and, and show you, you know, where, what the next steps are for moving forward in that project. So, that project is back on track to be construct, for construction over the next two years in 2026 and 2027. So that's the biggest and the largest project. It's important to also keep in mind that most of these projects do have cost participation requirements by the city, too. So when the county does a project in the city, that then reflects into your, your own CIP as a cost participation item as well. The second one I have on the list is the CASA 10 and CASA 17 intersection, so Lake Elmo Avenue and 10th Street. That was a new project last year, that continuing to be in there this year. They're, they're working on planning and design of that project as we speak, and they're talking about, you know, the new school opens up in 2026, and they're talking about that being, you know, a project that's constructed in 2028, I believe. Can't, not able to read my own, my own map from here, but, so that's that intersection that's being driven by the new elementary school. And then there's pedestrian, you know, a lot of, a lot of the discussions that are going on at those PMT meetings are pedestrian connections as well, would be the other things that they're trying to look at, what should be done, if any, there. The next project I have on there is Ideal Avenue, CASA 13, Phase 3. So that's over by the 180 acres, going from Stillwater Boulevard up to 34th Street, along the south two parcels of the, three parcels of the 180 acres. And this one is just, this is a planning and design project that they're, they're working on, it again is in progress now. In the CIP, it's scheduled to be constructed in 2028 at this time. This was one that was driven a little bit by the city, where we were, it wasn't on the CIP a couple of years ago, and the city was requesting it. We wanted, as developers, developers came in, we wanted to be able to inform them of what turn lanes and intersection improvements would be required, so that we could capture that from developer payments, rather than the city doing it after the fact or after The next one, number four, we have on the list is Manning Avenue from 43rd Street to 55th Street. This is, I believe, a new one on the list. I don't think this was on there last year. The county has been working on the Manning Avenue corridor throughout the whole length, all the way from I-94 to 36, for quite some time. And if you go back about five years, they were looking at a four-lane expansion from the new realignment at Stillwater Boulevard all the way down to 10th. That project sort of died, and they, and what we saw this year was just sort of a pavement rehab project with turn lanes, is what they put in, and they decided that that, they had gone back and reevaluated and decided that, based on the current traffic demands, that they didn't need the four-lane expansion yet, and they didn't have the funds for it. And now what they're identifying is the segment going north from that realignment up toward Stillwater High School as being in the construction timeframe of 2030. So, and what they're talking about there is a four-lane expansion, going from two lanes to four lanes. The next one that I have on the list, number five, is the intersection of CASA 19 and CASA 10. That's currently a four-way stop. They, they publish a intersection control evaluation study every year, and that's been on, that's been on the, the list for a long time, but it, it has, it's always been identified as issues, but not issues enough to get it up there in their priority list to, to fund it immediately. So, they are, again, targeting 2030, so it's out there another four or five years, they're looking at a roundabout at that intersection, it's currently controlled by an all-way stop. And then, planning and design projects only, the, the ones I've gone through so far all have construction planned in the next five years. The next part of the list, under number six, is a, is a few projects that are, were partly driven by the city, again, asking them to study the corridor, put a little time in some preliminary layouts, so that we have the opportunity to identify right-of-way needs that need to be dedicated as development goes. So we, we have CASA 14, we've asked them from Klondike to 39th Street, so coming into the downtown, you've got now the school, the elementary school that might be redeveloping, you have the furry motor site, those types of things. And if, if that happens, we need to know what that roadway's gonna look like, so that we can preserve right-of-way, so that we can look at pedestrian connections that are gonna be required as part of that. So, we've been urging the, the county to do, and, and it was by their choice that they went back to the Lake Elmo Park Reserve entrance, is the, is the length of the corridor they want to study. Last year on this list was one part project, we did have the Central Greenway Corridor feasibility study for how to get the Greenway Trail across Stillwater Boulevard, and that disappeared, so I called the county on that one, and the reason that disappeared is that's rolled into this project. They wanna study this corridor, and they've combined it with that. So this, this project includes the feasibility study for getting the Greenway Corridor, whether it's a bridge, a tunnel, or however they bring that across Stillwater Boulevard. The second one on that planning and design list is Lake Elmo Avenue from, going north from CASA 14 up all the way into Grant. We, we've had residents calling ever since North Star Legacy have gone in for the stretch of 43rd Street, so there's been requests for different signage, different speed limits, different things, pedestrian connections, crossings, things like that. So, we've asked the county to look at that. It's on the county's list to go, to look at this corridor all the way through, but we certainly support that earlier, that earlier part that's in the old village. And then the last one on there is Manning Avenue from 30th Street to CASA 14, so that's the middle segment, where they're looking to make that piece a two-lane, four-lane expansion, and will include, obviously, the UP railroad crossing as part of that. And whether they do a grade-separated crossing of UP railroad or not would be one of the things that they would be looking for. And then the last one on the list is, there's a generic, every year they have a generic category, just intersection control projects. They don't specifically list or identify any specific projects, but they have a budget in, in there. I believe it's of about $750,000, and so that's for doing traffic signals, taking on a particular intersection. And one of the ones that I know that would probably come out of this is if the Limerick Development goes and we realign Hudson Boulevard, they would be looking at an intersection or a signal, traffic signal at Hudson Boulevard in that new intersection. So that would be under that category. So that's the, that's the work they have identified in their CIP, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Councilmember Pragmas.
So, concerning RB 2701, I see that as planned for 2030, and with the elementary school getting completed next year, would it make more sense to move that up and prioritize that, so kids could cross more safely?
Um, I, it's something we can comment on if we want them to move that one up. I do know that pedestrian trails and connectivity is part of the Lake Elmo Avenue and 10th Street intersection.
Okay.
I know the Greenway Trail, that's another, the Greenway Trail is supposed to be coming up from Keats Avenue, so I know a trail component is planned for that intersection at 19 and 10 as well. But it hasn't, it hasn't ranked on the county's priorities to date for being up. If that's something the council wants us to push for and have moved up, that's certainly something we can put in the plans.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So in that case, is, I mean, there's three separate projects in regards to Keats and 10th, Lake Elmo and 10th, and then the Greenway itself, that would hypothetically actually have pedestrian connections between the two along 10th Street, correct?
Yeah, it would, yeah, they may not all go at one time, but you, if you're working on an intersection, you're certainly going to work that pedestrian connectivity through the intersection at the time, at least through that component of it. But maybe, maybe it's a trail to nowhere until the next component happens.
And to confirm with 2808 with 10th at Lake Elmo, that construction for 2028, that's for the roundabout, correct? Because we're, we'll, we require the district to have temporary lights up before the school opens.
Correct, it's a, that's an intersection to replace the temporary wood pole signal. And I believe a roundabout is the primary leading candidate, I know Nate sits in on those PMT meetings, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dragisic.
How's the city's share in these projects determined?
They have a cost participation policy that they follow, and so it spells out all components, trail components, curb and gutter, stormwater management, right-of-way. I would say the lion's share of the city costs in most of these projects is, is right-of-way and stormwater. If you have an intersection that's County Road, County Road, you'll see our cost participation isn't very high. The Manning Avenue project this year that had the turn lanes and the pavement rehab, for instance, our cost... 13 this year, it was about $34,000, it was, our share was just insulating our water main as they were exposing our water main. But then, you know, we're looking at a $5 million cost participation for Trunk Highway 36. So it, it, they have a policy, it's a very rigorous spreadsheet, we, so for instance, in Trunk Highway 36, we're still waiting, we've been participating with them in the design and development of that, but we have not seen costs or cost participation for our share, other than their high-level guesstimates with no detail. We will be receiving that shortly, and I think it's their intent to have us bring forward a cooperative cost-share agreement for the council, when you'll see all that detail and how they've arrived at that number in that agreement, and that will be coming forward in December for that particular project.
Because on most of these CASA projects, funding would be, could come, all of it could come from CASA.
Yeah, it, most of them come from all kinds of different costs, or different pools of money.
Right, but I mean, like waterline, if their excavation causes a problem for our waterline, it's on their county-state highway, it would be eligible for county-state highway funding.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to pay.
They, they don't have sufficient funds to do that, so they do, they do expect, I mean, if we, if we utilize their right-of-way for our utilities, if we have to relocate our utilities, they will, they expect the city to relocate them. And then the, the stormwater one gets, you know, they, they use our land, they, and they charge us for any contributing water from a hydraulic stand, modeling standpoint, so it's a pretty robust policy and formula. I have been known not to agree with many components of it, but they use it countywide, and they have all the cities using it, so they're trying, their argument is to treat all cities the same.
You know me, I'll look at it in detail.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're all county residents as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for discussion.
Move to approve city comments to be submitted to Washington County regarding the county's draft 2026-2030 capital improvement plan with comments to be submitted on or before November 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Excuse me, would, uh, I provide an amended letter?
Oh, yep, amended letter. So just...
Yes, I'm sorry, yep.
Just to, so not all council has been present in some of the meetings regarding CASA 17 and 36, and so now I can kind of, I don't know how many council members have gotten emails for resident, from residents that live south of 36 off of Keats. But the current plan did not show maintaining the exit from eastbound. In here, it's, westbound was written, it would need to be eastbound, Trunk Highway 36 to southbound Keats, so that right turn off of 36 would be removed, and people would have to go up to the button hook and come back on the frontage road to go south on Keats. And my, my request was that they keep the turn lane from 36 to southbound Keats active, so that residents don't have to, one, unnecessarily clog a button hook intersection that's gonna have plenty of traffic through it anyway, and to have to double back, I don't know, they'll have to go at least a half mile down and a half mile back to get to the south, southbound Keats. I don't know, can't remember exactly the distance of the button hook along the frontage road from Keats. But some of the residents didn't, didn't like that, and so then I'm requesting that the state leave the exit off of 36 to Keats Southbound. They're not necessarily in agreement with us, but I felt compelled to put that as a comment, that we're requesting that for that project. I'm open to any discussion if somebody thinks otherwise.
I, I, you know, I think it makes sense, I just, I guess, do you remember from the conversations, when this was being studied, why they didn't want to do that in the first place? Was there safety concerns?
Well, they, they say that there's safety concerns, but that, that movement has zero crash incidents from the eastbound 36 to southbound.
Accident.
Keats has zero crash incidents from it. It doesn't seem to be, I was told by Mendat, that it, it's just beyond what the FHWA accepts, which means it's acceptable to have an exit that distance from the interchange. You know, I think we're putting, the city's putting in a fair share of money into the project, I think estimates around four and a half to $5 million. The state is putting in roughly $5 million, even though it's their corridor. The county has brought this project forward, they did go get bonding money, some of the DOT say, well, those are transportation dollars. Well, they're transportation dollars in as much as Washington County went to get the transportation dollars. They're not necessarily transportation dollars that the DOT dedicated to this project. So, with as much as we're putting in, I know that closure of Keats is important, I know that that's a high-crash area along with the interchange, and I would like to see, you know, the crossing closed and, and the right turn onto 36, because of the speed differential makes sense, but I see absolutely, I, I, I failed to see the reason for removing the right-turn D cell lane for southbound Keats.
Yeah, I think that's a good addition, and, and again, it, obviously, it's for them to consider, but I think that's a very fair point, and something that if, if they feel like is doable, does make it simpler for those residents and... And I mean, yeah, that's like, glad you know that stat of no accidents there. That's good to know.
Well, there's, there's people who live off, you know, so it's sixtieth, fifty seventh, fifty third, fifty fifth, fifty first. People from Tapestry use Keats to go home off of thirty six. It's not necessarily just all large agricultural residents. There's the development right behind Rock Point Church that would use that as well. So.
Yeah.
It's, I don't think it's an insignificant number of, and this isn't like this was there and people moved in knowing it. This is something that's coming after the fact and that, that area is well established. The other, the other item that I asked to add is just that small highlight. Supporting on R B twenty six forty five was to supporting transportation and utility improvements. As some of you know, anything that happens on that city property north of, well, and then around CASA fourteen is going to need sewer. And if there's an opportunity, maybe it happens sooner and we take care of it beforehand. But some consideration to put in a, a pipe sleeve underneath the U P railroad so that if and when a sewer line does need to be brought north, that the sleeve is there. And you're only working with the railroad at the time that you're, you're working on the roadway project and you can extend that sleeve pipe beyond the right away and slip the sewer line in. Or whatever utilities we need to find that, that may or may not be needed in that area to at least have it looked at while they're working on this project.
Agree. Makes sense.
That's all I had for discussion. Everything else looks, I, I like the comments that Jack has made. They're all, they, they seem to make sense to me. Washington County does a, does do a really good job at maintaining the roadways. And yes, it does cost our residents some extra money as the city pays into some of these things. But it's, I think it's well planned out. It's, it's well looked after, well designed. I don't see any, any, anything that's really glaring to me beyond what Jack has provided in these comments.
Also, I think the timing on all these really makes sense. The only one that I was kind of going back and forth on was the R B twenty seven oh two, the on CASA fourteen, the park reserved to thirty ninth street. And then the CASA ten, CASA seventeen intersection, I was kind of almost at first, my thought was maybe those times should be flip flopped as far as twenty, twenty eight for CASA fourteen. But again, outside of that, it probably has more to do probably with like the financial side of trying to manage obviously some big projects with thirty six, seventeen interchange. So.
I think the, the twenty seven oh two is more of a planning arena.
Oh, that's right.
Where the twenty eight oh eight was actually a, a construction piece.
Well, then maybe, I, I guess I do think that, that's the only one to me, if the school's opening in twenty twenty six, that is already quite a troublesome area to get through at that time of, in the afternoon, especially without the school there already. So maybe that would be then, one thing that I would look at is maybe bumping the timeframe up and possibly like swapping those two.
Well, I think it's, it's not, they're, they're kind of two different things. And I think when you're looking at the twenty twenty eight, as council member Holt indicated, there will be a temporary wooden pole system with a, a signal system at the intersection. So when these projects go in, there's, there's quite a bit of preliminary design and design that goes into it. So you're, you, I, I think the twenty twenty eight is probably as soon as.
Got it.
As their staff could make it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it's, twenty twenty eight's as fast as they can get that one in the ground, which is why they went to the temporary pole system.
Okay.
In the interim, and they've mandated that that's up and running before the school.
Okay. And then the only other one was the CASA fifteen, forty third street to fifty fifth street. I, I guess my thought there is if that can start further up, kind of outside of the Lake Elmo borders, just from a cost perspective, I guess I don't know the necessity of it. There's not really future development there that, you know, there's going to be more traffic use. So I guess just from like a financial perspective of if that's something that, does it have to start at forty third street? Or could it be started at fifty fifth street and, and kind of that's where the expansion to four lane begins? Otherwise, I think all these other ones, I mean, these are all things that I hear from people, projects that are of high priority.
Yeah, regarding that CASA fifteen from forty third north to fifty fifth, I, I like that they're including that piece to the south with the development of North Star Legacy. I see that some of the crossings like at thirty ninth and the one that's north of that aren't the safest for pedestrians and residents that are trying to get over to the old village area. Now, there is a trail that goes along the west side of the roadway down to the intersection that's lighted. They can use that. But I, I, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad that they're, they're looking at it. And, you know, and when we look at these, we're like, well, that's, that's quite a few projects. But I think you also see in, in the packet, the number of projects at Washington County. Here, I feel like I'm defending Washington County a little bit. Having worked for a metropolitan county, if you look at the overall number of projects in the county, these guys tackle quite a bit all the way down, you know, towards Hastings Cottage Grove, all the way up to Rean on the St. Croix and those areas. So they, they tackle quite a bit. And this is just, this is just Lake Elmo. So understanding that these projects take a long time to plan, design and construct. I don't know that we could like grab all their attention for everything in Lake Elmo. Plus, you know, we got, we got the, the cost share and those things that we need to be cognizant of as well.
Yeah.
Councilmember Holt's.
I mean, I don't know if it, what it would look like, but with twenty seven oh two, if there'd be room for language to say, look, twenty twenty seven, understand that's your planning, there's logistical reasons, but just so you know, the district is strongly looking at redevelopment and the property owner as well. So something to consider, county, if you're able to, maybe twenty twenty seven, if that's your thought. F Y I, there might be a need sooner. Because that, as you said, that directly affects what that looks like. And I, I don't know what the county's awareness is with the school district as to that potential change.
I think it would be prudent to add something in there to say, the city would like to make sure the county understands that that school will be moving out and there could be some development plans for that location, intersection.
Entire site.
Yeah. So, I mean, just to make sure they're aware of it, I think is a good.
I can, I can craft something that they are aware of it. We meet monthly with them and we stress that we're seeing, we're seeing our planning staff meet with developers and opportunities and talking about that area. Every time I see that happen, I panic a bit because they all want to build in our right away and we need more right away.
Right, right.
Yeah, other than that, I didn't have anything. I, I agree with both of you. Like, these are things our, our constituents talk about frequently. They're necessary projects. There's a cost, but thank you for putting the comments together.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Do I say, council, do I say a motion with added comments during discussion? Mayor, I'm asking you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you can just approve the, the amended letter. And as long as you're seconded, you already have a seconded. Is it okay with that?
Yep. All right.
You do have a motion and a second on the table.
We do. Yeah. All right. All those in favor of the amended letter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Letter is approved. Thanks, Jack. Item number two is tree fund, right away Boulevard Tree Program.
Hello, good evening. Tonight we'll talk about the zoning text amendment to the tree fund and also the right, the Boulevard Tree Program. So there's just a little bit of background. The tree fund was presented to the council at a workshop in twenty twenty five. We discussed it. The, the city also received fifty thousand dollar payment from crater silverware schools for tree mitigation when the new elementary school was approved. The current code allows for fee and lieu, but does not specify how the fund should be spent. Using the funds to replace trees was discussed during the approval process. The city does not have a separate tree fund, a separate tree fund from the park dedication fund. And the tree does, the city does not have a right away Boulevard Tree replacement program. So the issue before the council tonight are two. It's, would the council consider a zoning text amendment to create a tree fund? And also would the council consider a Boulevard Tree Program? The proposed language is pretty basic. It would amend the tree preservation ordinance to add section G tree fund. So it starts with a purpose, and the purpose is to provide a dedicated fund for tree replacement throughout the city. The funding sources, the primary funding sources will be from fee and lieu of tree replacement, funds allocated by the city council and individual business donations. And the eligible expenses, fund shall be spent on programs approved by the city council, which include, but are not limited to a Boulevard Tree Program. So the expectation here is if this is approved, it would just be spent on the Boulevard Tree Program unless the council wants to adopt a different program. So public comment, this was advertised in the paper. We did not receive any comment before the planning commission meeting and no one showed up to the planning committee to write a comment. Fiscal impact, none for the tree fund. The Boulevard Tree Program costs would be offset by the fifty thousand dollar payment and future donations. Program administration and project delivery costs, not including trees and materials, are estimated to be around five thousand to ten thousand per year. Our recommendation is that the city council approve both the tree fund and the Boulevard Tree Program. And we have two motions.
Questions for Director Stopa? Councilmember Holt's.
I was looking through the F A Qs and like one of the que, that was created, which is awesome to help, to provide to residents. One of the things was what level of care is expected? And that's, you know, there is now a warranty. You will receive a how to care for the tree, which will also be on the website. Are we considering that part of the cost with the tree is also like, say, that water bag that includes with it?
They'd receive a water bag.
Okay. Good. So that is a very good bang for the buck.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen, approving the text amendment to the, to create a tree fund.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
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 We have a second motion.
Move to adopt the Boulevard Tree Program as presented by staff. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Councilmember Dragasic.
I think this is a really great program for the city, replacing Boulevard Trees. To me, I'm a tree person. I think it's important to get them replaced and have a nice canopy of trees. Makes the city a much more beautiful place and is actually good for the environment. I know a lot of other cities that have a tree program like this. Oftentimes residents will pay like a small fee, like five dollars or something. It's nominal. It's just, it's have some stake in the game. I'm not proposing that, by the way, but I think, you know, replacing Boulevard Trees is their loss through disease. They get hit by cars, whatever happens. Will just make the city a better place all around. And so I appreciate your efforts on that.
Any other discussion?
Ditto.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to adopt a Boulevard Tree Program as presented by staff, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, which was pulled from the consent agenda, is the Lake Elmo pickleball donation, which went through the Parks Commission. And they voted to recommend that we accept the donation for the paddle holders and the drink holders, but withheld the benches and the the, the separator fence or for lack of a better term on that. And councilmember Hearn, you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I clearly, I read through this too quick. I, I missed in the, I, I thought it was approving all of it. I guess my thought, my two cents on this or my thought on this is, I think when the community wants to get involved and do this type of thing, I think we need to, I think we need to try to honor that. You know, we had the example with Lake Elmo baseball with the fields not too long ago over at, gosh, which field was that?
Reed.
Yeah, Reed Park, where I know there was concern and they wanted to do the work and it turned out great and it saves the city a ton of money. And I think this is just, for me, this is another example of it's just a community member wanting to contribute. I, I really don't see any risk in including these, the, the wooden benches as well as the portable fence. That's just my feeling on this. I, I, I guess maybe others are more cautious with wanting to have a wooden bench, I guess, from a, a specific company where there's a warranty or something. I just, I don't, I, I think this is something that when we have a community member bringing this to us, that I think, I, I don't see any reason we shouldn't accept it.
I agree. I think this should be something that should be almost rewarded of like the fact that you're willing to put in your own time. There's no staff involvement. I don't see anybody getting injured on a two by twelve bench personally. But I, I honestly love the idea. I think it's great involvement and yeah, I have no issue with it.
Councilmember Dragasic.
I think if you look at the Parks Commission, they, they didn't reject the other stuff. They said discussed with the donor other recommendations to make the items more permanent or from a reputable manufacturer. So they didn't close the door and they want to have some further discussion about those. I support accepting all of the items. On the other hand, it, it may be, we accept, accept the ones recommended part commission right now and take a look at the other two. Ask part commission to meet with the donor and discuss those and come back with a recommendation. Cause they didn't say no, they just want to have some discussion.
And I, unfortunately for me, I failed to watch the Parks Commission meeting to see what the discussion was. But if I could ask Mr. Bowler to come to the podium and maybe enlighten, I don't know. Did anybody else watch the Parks Commission meeting?
I did not.
I, I could add a little bit into it. Yeah. Yep. So some of the concerns are having materials that aren't aluminum or permanent or longer standing as well as the staff that's doing the safety inspections of the equipment. So the bench being someone's going to sit on it, there's no standards to evaluate it against. So that was a concern and that is part of what we ask the commission to look at is any liability issues. So that's the bench. And then also for the court divider, I don't know, it was a recommendation by staff to the Parks Commission just like for permanent fencing to be considered, not temporary.
Well, so Mr. Bowler, a couple of questions I have is not on the benches so much per se. How, how, well, how, how long are the benches that you've, you've fabricated?
About fifty two inches long and sixteen or so, seventeen inches high. They'll support three people my size. And I'm a big guy.
Yeah. Can you talk about the temporary court dividers that you've, you said you're on your, your three point oh?
Yeah. Yeah. They're made out of a cut four foot snow fence in half, sliced it down so it's two feet. I picked the green snow fence over the orange because I just thought it would be more environmentally. I mean, it wouldn't like. I mean, it wouldn't like stark out the, the neighbors or anything. It's snow fence with some, some poles and a four by four base with a couple of one by sixes as kind of crossover like this, sort of stand up, you know, on their own. And then the, the nets are just to cover the width of the, of the courts, which is approximately eighty feet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And would those be taken down before and after use on the pickleball courts?
No, we, we've been leaving them up.
Oh, so it's something you've been using?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
I made them this year.
All right.
Yeah, and really because we had now six courts and they're very nice, they're beautiful courts. And people love them, but the pain of the balls flying all over and.
Okay.
People risking, they were freaking out about getting fallen over and breaking hip and all sorts of things.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Bowler since I asked him, asked him up?
No, no, I mean, thanks for asking those and thanks for clarifying. And I, that's a good point, you know, when the Parks Commission's looking at it, they're obviously looking at it from that perspective and, and that's what they're trying to look at it from. Again, I just, I, to be honest, I mean, from that comment, like I think there's less risk by having this there. People running into each other, tripping over each other. Maybe I just have a higher tolerance level for it too than, than others are comfortable with. But I just, I, I think it's a great thing and when the community wants to step up and do these types of things, I think we got to get out of the way.
Any, well, I guess we need a motion for discussion.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right, it's all right. We didn't say that beforehand, we're just trying to get some questions in there.
So motion to accept the donation from Lake Elmo Pickleball Friends Club for the two wooden benches, paddle rack, drink rack and a portable fence to divide the north and south courts.
Second. So we have a motion and a second, discussion. Think we've already heard discussion from Councilmember Hearn, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This will require four votes for the statute, which is kind of a weird one.
Oh, because it's a donation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilman Hearn on basically everything here. I think it should be something that's honored and with it being green treated lumber too, I don't see any risk with it splintering or falling apart or anything like that anytime soon. So I think it's a great asset and thank you for, for building it, it's awesome.
Anyone else? Otherwise, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. All right, council reports, Councilmember Dragasic.
No report.
Sorry.
Councilmember Holt's?
Thank you to the Lake Elmo Fire Department for making its rounds on Halloween. I know they got, managed to make it to multiple neighborhoods and it was definitely appreciated by the youth and the families throughout the city.
I have no report.
I, I guess just with the pickleball courts, we did get another comment about the, the time in respecting the hours. So maybe that's something that we ask with these benches, if we can put a, a sign again of the reminder of the hours. I think the, the Lake Elmo Pickleball Friends, if I remember right, they're the ones that were there at the, at the earlier aspect of it. But I guess just a reminder to please respect that because of the people that do live nearby. Obviously, we're trying to make this work for everybody and not have to just completely get rid of them, so.
No report.
All right, staff reports?
No report.
No report?
No report.
No report.
All right. Online is future agenda items, if you care to take a look at those. I gotta go. I do like to just state what's coming up in the workshop next week for those that may be watching. Bear with me just a moment.
For your information, mayor and council, the sidewalk trail snow removal policy discussion will be continued into the future sometime that has been postponed.
Okay. So we're getting a Highway thirty-six, Lake Elmo Avenue project update. I'm assuming that's from the county. Looking at some rental review, levy discussion scenarios and CIP future projects discussion. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this evening's meeting at seven fifty-five. Thank you.